To get started, likely in about 30 seconds, we'll wait for the prompt from Ms. Legault. So, good afternoon, everyone. Just for the information of the directors, we're having some trouble with the live stream, so this meeting is not being livestreamed on our channel, but we are recording it, and it'll be posted once they get the technical issues sorted out. So this meeting will be available for viewing on the channel subsequent to this. I don't know how long it takes them to upload it, but I suspect it should be up by this time tomorrow. With that, I'd like to welcome you to our committee of the whole meeting for December 8th, and I'd like to begin by acknowledging that we are variously logged in and gathered on the traditional and ancestral territories of the Kowachin, Malahat, Tobassit, Halal, Penaliket, Tuminus, and Liahson, Dinidat, and Pachidat peoples. I'd also like to welcome alternate director Brian Harrison to the meeting. He's sitting in for Director Salmon, who is otherwise engaged this afternoon. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 1:06 PM. Ms. Legault.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item of business is approval of the agenda.
I understand that there is potentially a late item on the agenda. Director Smith, you had something you wanted to bring up?
Thank you very much. To the Chair, I would like, under new business, to add an item for Area G Theta-Silon Community Center Forbes Hall designation, CVRD Primary Emergency Reception Center, and a CVRD grant application for a generator to support this center.
So that's a proposal to amend the agenda. I know staff have some observations on whether we have to discuss this today, or whether perhaps there's a better subsequent venue for this discussion. I'm not sure whether to turn this over to Ms. Legault, or perhaps our acting CAO. We could certainly adopt the agenda as amended and take this, but I'd like to hear staff on this one first. Ms. Legault, your observations, or somebody else?
I'm not sure if Mr. Elzinga is in the meeting, but I note the grant application deadline is in February, so there is an opportunity to have it at a future meeting if directors haven't had the opportunity to review the material.
All right. So, somebody want to move the agenda as amended? Is that a motion, Director Smith? Okay. It's moved as amended, seconded by several people. Discussion, Council Marsh.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to read the documentation. I did see it, but I was in meetings with you, Mr. Chair, until quite late last night, and they started, yeah, so I haven't had a chance. I'd prefer to wait myself, so I won't be supporting adding it today.
Any other observations? Ms. Legault, when would this potentially come up for discussion, if not today? Would it go to EASC next week?
It could go to EASC next week, or to a meeting in January, if that was a preference.
Director Smith?
Thank you. I appreciate the concern of this late item. We are constantly going from one emergency, state of emergency within the CVRD constantly, and this is an opportunity to bring this forward and move it along. We are going to go into the Christmas period, which means that we are, will be, this will be our last board meeting today until in January, and it gives the staff an opportunity to actually take some time to work on this while they're maybe just finishing one state of emergency. So, to me, it's being respectful of staff and giving them that opportunity to fit something in, because in January, we may find ourselves in another state of emergency, and then this would be bumped. It's just a courtesy, I feel, for staff to give them that extra time. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further hands up, I'm going to call the question on the motion to adopt the agenda as amended. All in favor? And opposed? Director Marsh, opposed. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Legault.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is adoption of minutes, and the first is M1, Corporate Services Committee Meeting of October 13th, 2021.
Recommendation that the minutes be adopted. Can I have a mover? Moved, seconded by, thank you. All in favor? And opposed. That carries. Ms. Legault.
The next item is M2, Community Services Committee Meeting Minutes of November 10th, 2021.
Again, a motion to adopt. Moved, seconded, all in favor? And opposed. That carries. Ms. Legault.
And M3, Regional Services Committee Meeting Minutes of November 24th, 2021, for adoption.
Moved by Director Andy DiNardo, seconded by Director Smith, all in favor? And opposed. That carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Legault.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No participation for public input period, so we'll be moving right on down to reports. And item R1 is a report from Legislative Services on resolutions to the 2022 Association of Vancouver Island and Coastal Communities Convention, and it's for direction.
Right. Who wants to start the discussion on this one? Director Smith, and then Marsh.
Thank you very much. I would like to bring forward an opportunity for us to recommend that the Improvement District Fire Halls departments have an opportunity to be included in the local government grant applications and funding under the regional district emergency management departments. We know that they back up the other fire departments in the CVRD. They have the same regulations and requirements as the CVRD fire departments, and the financial burden on these improvement districts is quite extensive sometimes to bring them up to date. We were fortunate enough, as the CVRD, to receive a $350,000 grant for the Missachi Fire Hall, and I know that that will make huge improvements for that fire hall and for it remaining within the community. And so I think that this would be something that we should look at bringing forward as a resolution to AVICC for the 2022.
Convention. Thank you, Director Smith. I'm going to suggest here that, you know, people that have ideas for resolutions like that, express them here. If nobody goes running out of the room screaming, that generally means there might be some support. Then I would suggest that that director get in touch with staff and craft the resolution that you'd like to have. We have some time here. The deadline is not till the January 28th, so we have a couple of board meetings between now and then, so then we could bring it back to the board for consideration. But this is more a discussion, just to see what is kind of on the minds of the directors and the board in terms of what we might be bringing forward. So, one of them would be funding for these improvement district fire halls. Council Marsh, or Director Marsh, sorry. Still getting used to the new paradigm.
Thank you, Chair, seeing. I couldn't think of what I'm supposed to call you here.
Yeah, I see the same problem.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it would be accepted, how often it's happened, but there was a discussion on remuneration for elected officials at North Kowachin last night. And what seems obvious is that it's, you know, and I felt it at this table too, that directors and counselors are reluctant to set their remuneration. And I know at UBCM, in the past, we've asked the province to take it over, but if it's fair, and staff would only be able to research, and probably Director Morrison would know if we could fly that flag one more time, I'd like to see that if our colleagues in AVICC would like to request that the province develop some kind of formula and take into account directors' roles and how much time they put in, people in district municipalities who have several towns as opposed to one town, and that kind of thing, and they set their remuneration, because it's very awkward. And our council decided last night not to do it, to leave it till the next one, so they're going to do the same thing. They're not going to give themselves a raise in the first year. And so, you know, the amount of hours that are asked make it very difficult for particularly younger working people who are trying to build up maybe their index pensions or that kind of thing. So, that's my thought. I just don't know if it's going to fly, because it's happened before, I'm pretty sure. Right, Director Morrison? So I don't know the rules.
And I would defer to Director Morrison on this one, as Chair of AVICC. I know it did come up at UBCM, and the province took the resolution, sent it back, and said no. So would it even be accepted beyond AVICC to UBCM? Director Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just maybe a note of advice and caution on this. I think that everybody should be aware that AVICC has far and away more resolutions at our Area Association Convention than any of the other area associations. And I would suggest that, while so many of them are adopted and moved forward into the pipeline with UBCM, that we should be very succinct and clear and direct on the items that we send forward. So, we can all go to the UBCM website and type in a search word for whatever the topic that we want to pursue is, and I can tell you that on both of these items that have been brought forward so far, there's been a lot of resolutions that have gone through. So, maybe, you know, make the suggestion, and then leave here today and go and do a keyword search on what's a very good website, and decide whether or not you want to pursue this any further. I would suggest that we put a lot through, we debate them all, but maybe fewer would be better in this case. Thank you.
But from a process perspective, if a resolution has already gone to UBCM, been adopted, and then been rejected by the province, does UBCM even accept it once it flows out of AVICC? They generally say no, right?
It generally goes into the block of already approved and adopted resolutions.
Yeah, which, that and 50 cents doesn't buy you a cup of coffee at Starbucks. All right, Director Stone hit his hand up.
Actually, Ian said it at the end there. I just looked up. Both those resolutions have responses from the province there. For the improvement districts, it says they are eligible for funding if they basically undergo conversion to a regional district or municipal service, and there will be no funding forthcoming from the province or federal government for improvement districts. And on the wage, setting the wages, there's several here. I haven't read all the responses, but there do look like there are several responses from different wordings of that resolution over the past five years. The improvement district one was adopted in 2020, and the provinces got quite a verbose reply there, but it's a non-starter.
All right. Director Marsh?
I just follow up, Mr. Chair. I wonder, Director Stone, I noted when I was looking at the considerable list that we've done, that in 2019, our resolution for strong fiscal futures was endorsed, and I do remember standing at the mic with my knees shaking quite a few years before that at UBCM with a resolution from North Kowachin on strong fiscal futures. So, did you find anything on remuneration? So my point is, they've done, accepted that more than once, although they haven't done anything about it, really, but...
Yeah, I think it was endorsed. I was just trying to find the one, the latest one.
Okay, we can just leave it, if you...
But it is their 2012, some of them were not endorsed, but yeah, you can look through them there, and you might be able to be creative with the wording to get it back on the floor, who knows?
Okay, and the report also does identify, at the July 14th meeting, the board adopted a recommendation that exploration of a speculation tax for the Kowachin Valley be referred to a future discussion of resolutions for submission to AVICC. So, I'm not seeing any other hands or enthusiastic chatter about other resolutions we want to bring forward, but this is one that perhaps we need to talk about. It is Kowachin Valley specific, so I'm sure it hasn't come up before at AVICC or at UBCM. I know at North Kowachin, we're having the same discussion, and I've just sent refreshing letters to the Minister of Finance on this one. Do we want to ask staff to craft a resolution with respect to the speculation tax, or we can talk about it when we come back in January? I see two thumbs up, three, four, five. All right, you know what? Let's do this properly by motion. Oh, Deborah's waving at me. Sorry.
Lynn's had her hand up twice or three times.
I'm sorry, Director Taparowski?
Director Smith has her hand, had had her hand up three times. You missed her?
Oh, okay, sorry. Director Smith?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, under the improvement district resolutions that went through, were they to do with water or sewer and not for fire departments?
Yeah, you can Google them.
I'm asking while we're in this meeting. I didn't, I'm not as good at the Google through the UBCM response and resolutions, and maybe Director Stone has a quick answer on that. But I, you know, if the resolutions have been put forward that way, were for water or improvement, or sewer for improvement districts, that's very different than a fire department backing up other fire departments.
I believe it was fire departments. I do recall that discussion in 2020, and I think at a previous convention as well. I'm pretty sure fire was actually covered. Director Smith?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the specific resolution I was reading does cite water in the request, but in the response from the province, it says, "Any improvement district service would need to become a service of the regional district or municipality to receive funding," and it seems quite clear from the response that they're referring to all improvement district services. I know that we've had this conversation at UBCM since I've been around, and there's, you know, the states, but from both governments, both Liberal and NDP government is, has been, if improvement districts want funding, they need to join the regional district services, and the regional district can apply. So, that's been the experience, but can always try again, I'm sure.
All right, so back to the speculation tax, then. I saw a bunch of thumbs up. I think the motion would be that we direct staff to prepare a resolution for the April AVICC convention regarding the inclusion of the Kowachin Valley in the province's speculation tax regime.
So moved.
That's moved. Can I have a seconder? Thank you very much. Any further discussion on that one? Seeing none, all in favor? And opposed. That carries. Director Morrison?
Question through to staff. As the resolution that was introduced at EASC last week, is that proceeding to the board, or does that need to be raised at this new committee?
Through the Chair, that recommendation will be at the board this afternoon, or evening, sorry.
Thank you.
Any other input on this item? Yes. Director Nicholson?
I was just wondering if anyone could update me on where we're at on this local government act modernization with respect to regional districts. I think that there was some work underway with other regional districts on this, was there not?
Director Morrison?
We would have to reach out to staff for an update. It's not part of this agenda item, and it's outside of the normal AVICC/UBCM conduit.
Director Marsh? Oh, I'm sorry, Director Nicholson's not finished. Go ahead.
Well, that surprises me, because I see on the list of things that we had either submitted or contemplated submitting in 2018, that was on the list, so I don't know why I'm so out of line on this one. Could someone explain that to me? It seems to me like this is a big issue, that we continually are hitting our heads against a brick wall of code.
And, you know...
It seems to be useful to continue to push it.
All due respect to Director Morrison, I don't think there's any problem with a resolution urging the province to get on with it. I mean...
I just point out, and I don't know what this means, I know Director Morrison would know better, it was not admitted for debate in 2018. So he could tell us more.
Director Morrison?
So, under successive governments, the resolutions have flowed through from many varied area associations through to UBCM. UBCM has taken this up the ladder multiple times, and the answer has been no. So, there is a different movement afoot outside of the AVIC, or the Area Association, UBCM, which is, from my understanding, led by some CAOs in regional districts, that I don't know that they are in a position to report publicly yet. So, that's my understanding. If we wanted to put something in, I'm almost certain it wouldn't be admitted for debate. It's been asked and answered numerous times. So, yes, it's an incredibly important issue that a lot of people are prepared to put energy behind, but it's not through this vehicle.
Thank you for the clarity. I see no other hands on this item, so, oh, I do now.
Excuse me?
Director acted, then, okay, Director acted.
I'm in a funny spot, you're not seeing me. To the speculation tax, will that come back for discussion before it goes to AVICC? Because I would have a large amount of people in our community who would be really interested in how that would affect recreational properties.
Yeah, the resolution, what we've done is we passed a motion directing staff to craft a resolution on this. That'll come back to the board for, we can beat it up and fine-tune it, or, and at that point, we can, after we take a close look at it, maybe we want to say, no, we don't want to do this. I mean, who knows? But it'll come back. Director Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's an interesting point that Ian's just brought up, Director Morrison has just brought up, and if I'm understanding this correctly, if powerful organizations such as AVIC and UBCM have had no effect on the government at all in this matter, why is there a separate, less powerful voice coming forward? As, do, is it really going to be, I don't understand why this is happening if big guys can't get on, and yet maybe a little guy could. Just expand on that one for me, if you could.
It seems to me that it's more a staff-to-staff thing. They want to take it out of the political arena and have the staff, the CAOs, and the bureaucrats in the ministry kind of work on something rather than making it political and keeping it there. That would be, I think, my answer. Director Marsh?
Yeah, just further to what you're saying, I would think that it, just because a political body recommends they do it, that doesn't mean we're going to be involved. We just want them to do it.
All right. Any other hands on this one? Scanning the screen like crazy, I'm not seeing any. All right, Ms. Legault?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On to item R2 is a report from Parks and Trails that was referred from the November 17th Electoral Area Services Committee regarding active transportation contribution request for Allenby Road improvements. For direction.
Director Taparowski?
Do I need to be moved into the lobby for this discussion?
You need to be moved into the lobby for this discussion. Why? You have to declare why you're in conflict.
Because I'm a Kowachin Tribe's counselor?
That'll do. All right, can somebody move Director Taparowski out of the meeting and into the lobby for the duration of this discussion? Thank you very much. I read the report, and I guess my only question to staff is, if we go ahead with this, is this funding coming out of gas tax, or is it coming out of requisition? The gas tax is mentioned, but it's not real clear to me how this is going to be paid for. Who wants to take that one? Oh, there's Brian.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. At this point, there is no clear direction in terms of how this will be funded, hence the report before the committee that was brought to Electoral Services Committee for direction.
Would you have, so you wouldn't have a recommendation? I mean, you know, let's be honest, we're in a tough year for requisition. Is there some way that we can get this done through gas tax, or does that take away from stuff we've already committed? I see you, Director Nicholson, you're next.
To, Mr. Chair, to your point, yes, gas tax funds have been otherwise identified for active transportation improvements in Electoral Area E that was not inclusive of this particular project element, that only came forward to the board, to the CVRD in recent months. So it's, it's a new opportunity, but also comes with funding implications in terms of how to achieve that, if the CVRD wishes to support it.
Director Nicholson, this is your Electoral Area. What's your thinking on this?
So I requested that this be brought to the committee of the whole, because I think relationship building with First Nations is a strategic priority of the board. It's really important for reconciliation. And the regional district along those lines needs to be looking for win-win opportunities to build relationships. And we know that our work with Kowachin Tribes on the Kowachin Watership Board has been pretty instrumental in opening the door to establishing a positive relationship with them. And the benefit has, the region has really benefited from the grant funding and attention that has been able to, that's occurred to the, someone's banging on my door, to the region. So, I think that another community priority is helping people move around the community in an active way and a safe way. And so roadside pathways, I think, are a great win-win opportunity when we can partner with First Nations. So in this instance, their, Kowachin Tribes is short of funding to complete a roadside pathway from work that they've been doing on Indian Road and Miller Road. They'd like to complete the pathway down into town to their Kowachin Tribes offices. This is a super busy area. It's one of the main arteries into town, and I think it would be, the whole region would benefit from having this work done. I have, Area E has gas tax funding that's been allocated to it. I've been sitting on this gas tax funding, trying to get a project going to complete a roadside pathway from the reserve part of Miller Road through to Coke Island Road, where the kids get on the bus stop. And a roadside pathway completely along Miller Road and into town would be a huge benefit to that neighborhood, which is pretty dense, kind of urban residential area. So, I have, I think about $800,000 of gas tax funding that currently is available for that project. It is going to be, roadside pathways in general are costly. Roadside pathways in that area are going to be particularly costly and complicated because they're, it's sort of a high-risk drainage area. That's, that whole slope along Allenby Road is unstable, and so there's lots of stormwater management stuff that has to be addressed at the same time. So I don't think I have enough funding to do both, and I actually think that because it's such an important opportunity to work with Kowachin Tribes, that I thought the board would probably be interested in chipping in to have this done. I'll stop there, but I would like to ask maybe Natalie or Ms. Weiner to provide some options on how it could be funded regionally.
You say you've got $800,000 in gas tax money, and I'm seeing a $265,000 price tag here. Oh, no, no, 265,000. Yeah, I mean, how much of that $800,000 is committed? How much do you have potentially left over? I'm not trying to bargain here, I'm just trying to get a picture of what the finances look like. Or is that what Ms. Weiner is going to tell us?
My problem, Chair, is...
My problem, Chair, is that I don't have a good cost estimate yet for the work that needs to be done along Miller Road from, from the reserve to Cow, to Coke's Island. That's, that work hasn't been done yet by staff. So I, I think likely, given the cost of roadside pathway projects and, and the fact that the Cowichan Tribes is, is saying it's going to cost 225, I think, thousand dollars to do from Allenby Road Bridge, basically, into Tribes. You can see that that's a very flat, easy section to do, so, you know, likely, I'm going to need even more than 800 to complete what I want to do.
Ms. Weiner.
Through the chair to Director Nicholson, I looked at a few options. There was the strategic priorities funding, which is potentially into the 100 budget for next year, which has typically been about 75,000. It was used for some projects for economic development this year, previously was done, there's funding that's gone into reserves for the sportsplex that was previously passed, I think, in 2019. So there is some funding available there for 75,000. Outside of that, it would be potentially, if a bunch of directors wanted to go in, there's always use of the grant aid funding. Or I looked at regional parks, but unfortunately, we've got a report coming, I just noticed, that came through my desk today from Mr. Farquhar, and that is stating that there will be significant costs due to this recent event that's just happened to repair the Cowichan Valley Trail, which is more than what the reserve funds actually have at the time. So the only one I have is potential funding is the 75 that I can think of at this point.
I have Director Wilson to speak, but I see Mr. Farquhar has popped up as well. Do you have something to add, Brett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and nothing further than what Ms. Weiner shared at this point in time, but thank you.
Okay, Director Wilson has deferred, he doesn't want to speak. Director Nicholson again.
I just wanted to follow up and ask about general government.
Through the chair to Director Nicholson, general government is where that strategic priorities funding is. That is currently with the 2022 budget, has the $75,000 in the proposed budget.
Director Marsh.
Thank you. Through you to Ms. Weiner. Are there any reserve funds in the general government function?
Uh, yes, there is reserve funds in the general government function. Those reserve funds are used and are allocated to go towards things like the software that's going to be needed for the records management system. We have them allocated out for various things. I could look at it and go into it in more detail. But this is normally, capital reserves cannot be used for this type of project because we will not own the land. It's not a capital asset of the CVRD going forward. So we can't look at capital funding for that. All that's left is operating reserves.
So if, if supposing the member municipalities and the, or at least one or two of them, and all of the directors wanted to share this, what would be the, I guess you can't say that, what it would cost each district, because it varies, doesn't it?
Uh, you're requesting.
Like, how much are we looking at if we spread it around, say, between at least the municipality of North Cowichan and the city of Duncan and the regional directors?
I could probably give you an estimated number in about five minutes, if you want me to get into the system.
Sure. I, I don't know of any other way to do this, but it seems to me that this, as Director Nicholson has stated, is a an incredible opportunity, and a very symbolic one, actually, because this stretch of land is kind of a piece between, in, reserve lands. And I know there's some reserve lands across Allenby, across the bridge, but there's also city of Duncan land. And to me, symbolically, it's kind of a, yeah, come on back to, you know, have an easy access to the land that you've never ceded, in a way. So I would really like to see a way that we could do this, and, um, I just don't know enough about the, how, how the funding would go.
There's two options.
Mr. Farquhar has his hand up, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Farquhar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You may have been alluding to, to part of it as well. There is the provincial program for grant funding for active transportation. They're currently not taking applications at this time. However, there could be an opportunity for a joint application with the consent of both Cowichan Tribes Council and the CVRD Board to make a, a new application when the program becomes active in the new year, to apply for funding that would apply up to 80% of the project costs. So as Ms. Weiner noted, if there was some seed funding that otherwise could be made available at this time, those funding funds could be identified for 2022 that could contribute towards the balance of funds that would be required over and above what the grant application could be made for between tribes and, and the CVRD. So that's certainly one option that can be considered in terms of finding a way forward to make this project happen.
So, just doing quick math on, on the back of a napkin here, if it's a $265,000 project and, and the grant would cover 80%, the 20% would work out to about 72,000, which would be covered by that 75,000 Ms. Weiner has identified that's in function 100. All right. Do we have any idea when the next intake will be for that grant, Mr. Farquhar?
Mr. Chair, unfortunately, no, but we're hopeful that they'll be opening the, the doors on it in 2022. It seems to be something that comes up annually.
Director Smith.
Uh, thank you. Through the chair to staff, I'm just wondering what other active transportation projects might be looked at during that time. You know, we continue to look at the Cowichan Valley Trail that would connect Shemainus all the way through the First Nations land into Duncan to create a corridor for those could use for work, and also to connect the Halala in that area to either Shemainus or to Duncan on an active transportation. So I'm just wondering if there would be that project put in that direction. Thank you.
Mr. Farquhar.
Mr. Chair, an excellent question, and as the committee may recall, at the previous Regional Services Committee meeting, Bunce Engineering Associates was before you doing a presentation on the initiation of completing the Regional Active Transportation Plan that we're endeavoring to have the consultants reach out to our regional community in the new year with the overall objective to having that plan completed by late spring for board consideration, in particular, moving into the 2023 budget. So certainly in terms of short term, there are no other major priorities. We're fully anticipating that completion of that Regional Active Transportation Plan. We'll identify those regional priorities and, and help set some, some framework and guidelines and direction in terms of establishing priorities on moving an active transportation program forward within the regional district.
So I'm, I'm seeing two potential recommendations or options in the staff report. One, that up to $265,000 in CWF gas tax funds identified for Area E roadside pathway development within Coke's Island Eagle Ridge Heights Community be applied toward completion of about 500 meters of paved widened shoulder along Allenby Road. And I'm hearing from Director Nicholson that that money potentially is already committed because we've got other issues. The second option is that we basically kick this down the field and tell Cowichan Tribes that active transportation projects like this will be considered during development of the active transportation plan. But I've heard a third option now from, from Mr. Farquhar, that we provisionally commit up to $75,000 from function 100 reserves, subject to successful application of a grant from the province for, and I'd, I'd need some help with the wording of the motion, I'm not sure what the, what the program is. But that, you know, that we basically go ahead with it that way, and, and I guess maybe that might be the focus of the discussion, Director Nicholson.
So what I was hoping was that the board would be, would, would really see the benefits of funding this project, and up to the tune of around $200,000. And then I, through the gas tax funding that I have for Area E, I would be prepared to, to, to fund the balance of it. And all of this would, of course, be under the understanding that if a grant opportunity came along, we would take it. But we can't count on that because, you, you know, the government clearly is, is, their budget, they're, they're, with all the flooding and everything else, it's, it's highly unlikely that there will be an infrastructure program this year. But I think it's really important that we do this project one way or the other. Yeah, so I, I, I would, I would move, I would make a motion that the CVRD provide regional funding up to $200,000 from the strategic priorities part of general government or whatever. And with the proviso that Area E pays the balance of whatever's required to complete this project. The other, the other hook that we have here is that the, my understanding is that the Community Works Funding Program has ended, and I understand that we have to get all that funding spent by 2023. So it's going to be a real challenge to get the, these projects done. Anyway, so we really need to get going with it. We can't wait and see if we can get grant funding and so forth. We really have to start moving on it, so.
Director Nicholson, I heard the beginnings of a motion there, although it was a little bit lacking specificity in terms of where the, what, what function or where the money would come from. But you're, you're suggesting that that the committee recommended to the board that CVRD allocate up to $200,000 from a fund yet to be identified toward completion of about 500 meters of a paved widened shoulder along Allenby Road. Is that basically what you're saying? And that Area E would provide the rest?
I can send the motion if you like. It was that the CVRD provide funding of up to $200,000 in 2022 from general government to Cowichan Tribes for completion of the roadside pathway along Allenby into town, and further that any balance required be provided from Area E Community Works Funding.
Okay, that's a motion. I have a second, Director Marsh. Director Staples, haven't heard from you yet.
I just had a question regarding the, the, something that Director Nicholson said with the motion. You also mentioned that there was any funding opportunities came up. Can that be, should that be added into the motion? That was my only suggestion. I do support the motion either way. So I just, I'm looking for clarification, I guess, from Director Nicholson.
Sure, that would be fine to add that. I, I just don't want the project to be delayed at this point, so the work is not done, right?
Yeah, I, I hear that. I, I, I support the motion either way. I just didn't know if that had, wanted to be part of the, the motion that, that if there were funding to come up in, and also thinking about a, a date as well. You know, because funding could take a long time. So i- in the, in the terms of, of efficiency and of getting this completed, because it sounds like it does need to be completed within the next fiscal year, I wouldn't want to have the grant funding hold that up either. So I do support the motion as it was made, and if there is grant funding that comes along that, that makes sense and fits and it works within the timeframe, I support that as well. So I leave it to the mover.
I, I see Mr. Farquhar has popped up, and then I've got Director Morrison and Director Kuhn. Oh, and Ms. Weiner as well. So, so I'll, I'll go to Mr. Farquhar and then Ms. Weiner.
I defer to Ms. Weiner. Thank you.
Ms. Weiner.
Through the chair to the committee, I want to make, express that we could always do up a supplemental, make this part of the budget process, because tomorrow the board will be seeing the overview of the total budget process, and I feel that this, as a priority, should be included in that budget process. So I would recommend that the board do this as a budget supplemental. You could put in with it coming from function 100, potentially using operating reserves or grant funding at this point in time, because you don't want to tax, I caution you not to necessarily tax, because if the requisition goes out in March, you've taxed for the funds, and if a grant fund comes in, then you've taxed the taxpayer for something that goes. So I'd recommend going and utilizing function 100 operating reserves. But we can put that all in a supplemental and bring it forward with the budget process.
Director, are you good, Mr. Farquhar? Or do you have anything to add? Yeah, okay. Director Morrison, then Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and that's, that's exactly the, the concern that I, I raise, that this motion is for a 2022 project. It's, there's tax implications. There's 75,000 seems to be the amount that's in there. We're contemplating our, our budgets in the next little bit, and if we're to add a supplemental, that will be an increase in requisition, as Ms. Weiner has just explained. So we've already given pretty clear direction to staff, and I understand staff has been working really hard to stay within the, the direction that we've given them. And this, again, will be another one of those that we did throughout the year that we're adding to the, that will cause us that big shock, sticker shock when we ultimately look at the budget. I know that I've got, I, my gas tax allocation for my entire electoral area isn't much more than the amount that we're talking about for the whole area, for the entire gas tax program. So I'm pinching pennies in, in my area, and, and while this is a very worthy-looking project, I don't know how I can look at my community members in the eye to say that this is a priority for, for requisition dollars. So I'd be cautioning everyone to think very clearly about going down the road of adding requisition to the budget at this point.
Director Kuhn.
Yes, I agree with Director Morrison. I, I think he's right, and I, I, I would, I could possibly support the proposal that Mr. Farquhar came forward with, but the, the motion as before is I can't support.
We've heard from Ms. Weiner that, maybe I was reading between the lines, but this motion is a little bit premature because perhaps we're better off to make this part of the, the budget discussion generally. With that in mind, I'm wondering whether it would be appropriate that we maybe kick this ahead to a future budget meeting, rather than make a decision on, on this motion today, so that we have a sort of more comprehensive look at, at the whole picture before we commit, you know, $265,000 or 200, in the case of the board generally. I don't know if there's an appetite for, for a motion to refer, but I think that might be appropriate. Director Marsh.
I would be happy to refer, as Ms. Weiner suggested.
Okay, we have a motion to refer. Director Yanni DiNardo, are you seconding that? Okay. Any further discussion on the propriety of referral? I don't see any hands. I'm going to call the question on a referral to a future budget meeting. All in favor? Hand opposed? Nobody that I can see opposed. The motion carries. Ms., uh, Lego, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On to the new business item regarding the emergency reception center and the grant, Director Smith's director's report.
Director Smith, you'd like to introduce this, I'm sure. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much. Thank you for allowing this to be added to the new business. The purpose of this report is to request that the Teeta's Island Community Center Forbes Hall designation be changed from a CVRD secondary emergency reception center to a CVRD primary emergency center reception center, and that the CVRD apply for grant funding to purchase a generator under the UBCM 2022 Emergency Operations Center and Training Grant Program. A little bit of background on the Teeta's Island Forbes Hall. This hall goes back many years. It was originally built and has, since that time, it was built in the 1980s. Over time, the hall had issues that needed to be rectified. The decision was made to remove the bill, old building, and build a new building. The fall of 2021 found a $2 million building that is now on that location. Some of the things that. that the Thetis Island Community Association, uh, when they were designing and building the building, they included the construction to current seismic standards. The, uh, the expanded size of the main hall has been increased capacity for group lodging. Food preparation facilities have increased meal service capacity significantly. Food and water storage capacity has more than doubled. The planning ensured that most of the building can be heated and cooled using backup generators. There is even a shower in addition to increased washroom capacity. A dedicated space for first aid and primary health care has been accommodated. In short, preparing for an emergency has been central to the project. This building has changed, and I think that it's important that, along with those changes that have been made, that the CVRD consider this change from a secondary emergency center to a primary emergency center. Also, one of the things is that quite often the power is out during the winter. It will have also an HVAC so that it can be used as a cooling center during the heat waves or heat domes that we've had. And then other parts that are important is sometimes the ferry is unable to, uh, operate. Uh, there's damage with, um, the dock, and that makes it that the ferry is unable to come and go. And it's an awfully long swim over to Frank Jamison for, uh, those residents in that area. This hall can actually capture those that are on, um, many of the islands that are around Thetis Island. It can, uh, Damon, uh, Scott, uh, Hudson, Reed, Leach, those are some of the islands, and it's also a backup area for the Penelica tribes. So I think these are, are really good and ha- um, opportunity for us to pass this on to staff to work on, so that we can move along and be proactive, and I, that the staff will be able to find time to fit this into their work schedule, uh, over the next month, so that we can, they can prepare for bringing forward a, an application for us to authorize with regards to the generator. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Smith. I see you have a recommended resolution in your report. I'm not going to entertain it right now, because I would like a little more information from staff, and I, I don't see, uh, Mr. Elzinga in the virtual room, so I'm going to turn to our acting CAO. What is the implication of converting a building like this from a secondary emergency reception center to a primary emergency reception center? I mean, I, I, I totally understand the need for a generator, and, and I totally understand where Director Smith's going, coming from, but, um, is there more involved here than just changing a name in terms of down-the-line costs and such?
Uh, through the chair to, um, to the group, I, I think that this is actually, uh, a question for our emergency program coordinator, so I'm not in possession of the information to ask that, or answer that question. So I think that, um, it makes sense to send this to staff to evaluate whether or not these requests, um, in Director Smith's report are possible, um, and what the implications might be if they are possible and if they're not possible. Um, but I, I can't, uh, answer the detail on it, uh, myself.
So your recommendation would be that we refer this matter to staff for a report back to, uh, possibly Electoral Area Services?
Yes, that's correct.
Would that satisfy you, Director Smith? All right. So a motion to refer Director Smith's staff report and the background information, uh, to staff for a report to an upcoming meeting of the Electoral Area Services Committee. Can I have that motion? Moved, seconded by, thank you, Director Stone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to refer, and opposed, that carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Legault.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no participants for question periods, so it would be, uh, up to adjournment at this point.
There being no further business on the agenda, I'm going to declare this committee of the whole meeting adjourned at two P M. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
See you for hospital board in an hour.